Regular meeting of the Corvay City Council to order. May 25, 2021 via Zoom. Roll call, please.
Councillor Foster.
Present.
Gross. Quinn.
Present.
Dodd.
Present.
Goodrich.
Didn't hear Lori, but I can see her. So she's present. So, okay. We're only missing councillor Gross and he is on his way. He'll be joining us momentarily. So we will then have all the council, the mayor, city clerk, city administrator, city attorney, and other staff that's in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
It moved by Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
By Foster. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. The agenda is approved. I have a very special proclamation this evening that I would feel very privileged to read. It is concerning Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And I'm going to give some credits, but I'll wait till the end before I get my credits out. So, City of Corvay Proclamation. Whereas this month, we recognize the heritage and achievements of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, AAPIs, across our nation and in our local community. Whereas, whereas we recognize that Asian Americans are not a monolith, our AAPI neighbors enrich this community with a diversity of cultures, languages, faiths, and religions. Whereas, we celebrate and honor the invaluable contributions of our AAPI neighbors have made to our culture and to the arts, law, military, science, sports, and public service, including those who have served on the front lines of the COVID-19 pandemic as healthcare providers, first responders, teachers, and other essential workers. Whereas, in spite of the strength shown and the success achieved, AAPI communities face systemic barriers to economic justice, health equity, educational attainment, and personal safety. Whereas, we recognize the heightened fear felt by many AAPI communities in the wake of rising anti-Asian harassment and violence during the COVID-19 pandemic and beyond. Whereas, in the midst of a difficult year of pain and fear, we reflect on the tradition of leadership, resilience, and courage shown by AAPI communities and recommit to this struggle for AAPI equity. Now therefore, I, John A. Lindell, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Corvay, do hereby proclaim May 2021 to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Corvay, Iowa, and call upon the people of Corvay to learn more about the history of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. Sign this 25th day of May 2021. John A. Lindell, Mayor. Fabulous proclamation, and I just have to give all the credit to councillor Quinn for bringing this to my attention and the city's attention that this would be very appropriate for, to make this proclamation for the month of May. And it's even seen a little even more appropriate that it falls on the anniversary of George Ford's homicide. It's all in the same spirit in many ways. So councillor Quinn, I would love to have you say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone. First off, I would like to say thank you to the city for giving me the opportunity to work with community member, you know, to come up with this proclamation. With the past year, with the rise in anti-Asian hate, it's hit very close to home to me. And I, I just want to pass the message on to everyone that we are just like everybody else's. You know, we have dream, we have fears, we have, we are very much American, just like you and your neighbors. Our kid is exactly like your kids, you know, with teenager aims and all of that. And I just hope that, you know, we all can look at each other, no matter how different we look, we see each other as human being, and we treat each other with kindness. You know, and take the time to learn about different culture that you are not familiar with, whether it's talking to, you know, people on your colleague or your neighbor, or, you know, your student, teacher, and anyone. Learn about the culture through that, through food, you know, to our struggle through all of that. We are always there, willing to talk to anyone and enlighten anyone as far as, you know, all cultural. And there are over 40 Asian country in the world. In each country, within that country, there are so many different, you know, communities within that country. So, we are not the same. We are not the same, but we fall under this Asian American umbrella here in the US. And we ask that, you know, you all treat us the way that we like to be treated and the way that you like to be treated. And really, hate, it's taught. You know, and so with love. And I hope that we all teach love instead of hate. And I have to give credit to the two community member who are going to accept the proclamation today. Without their support, without the support of my community and the people here in Corvay, I would not be here today, and I would not be able to bring this into light. So, thank you so much.
So I see that we have two guests with us this evening. I will virtually present you the proclamation, and you will receive a much nicer hard copy with my signature on it in the next couple of days from the city clerk. So, please feel free to introduce yourself and say a few words if you'd like.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ming Lohd. I have been a Corvay resident for nearly 20 years. Soon, Corvay will become the place where I've spent most of my life. I came originally from Shanghai, China, and my husband came from India but grew up in Africa. Recognizing my family's cultural heritage and experience is really, really important to us. It sends a very strong message that we belong here in this community, and our diverse background is valued. So, thank you, Mayor, and the council for stepping forward to honor the API community through this proclamation and to celebrate the API Heritage Month with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ming.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Ying Yang. I work at University of Iowa. I have been living in Corvay for over six years now. So, as a member of the AAPI community, I've never thought about speaking out until recently. With all those violence and crimes towards Asian Americans, I felt like being hurt so much. And so that I could not be silent anymore. When we stand together as a united AAPI community, we feel stronger and more connected to each other. So, living in Corvay here, where the Asian population has grown 60% in the past decade, I'm so pleased to hear that today, May 2021 is the API Heritage Month. So, this is just a starting point for us to stop being silent, I think. Although, from a Confucius' point of view, silence is golden. I really want to take the opportunity to say thank you to, from the bottom of my heart, and also to, to, to all of you who are here as the city council of the city of Corvay, from the bottom of my heart today, and also to say, let's stand together and make Corvay a loving place for everyone, no matter how different we look. Thank you.
Thank you, Ying and Ming both. And hi, thank you for the wonderful diversity that you provide our community. It's really makes us a richer place to live. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to say anything? Very good. Well, we will move on then. Thanks again. Move on to item five, which is citizen comments. This would be the time for anyone who would like to speak to us tonight about an issue that's not already on our agenda. Mr. Clerk, do you know if there's anyone either in the audience or virtually that would like to address us?
Received no written comments, and I don't believe there's anyone in the audience. I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Thank you. In that case, we'll move on to item eight, which is transit fares and passes. It's a public hearing on the proposed transit fare adjustments and passes. I'll go ahead and read it for the, for, just for the sake of anyone tuning in that doesn't have this in front of them. The following are under consideration. And I will just mention that none of these are an increased fare. They're either maintaining the same, or in some cases, they've been discounted. A dollar adult cash fare, no fare for children under five years old, 50 cents fare, youth fare for ages five to 18, no fare for seniors 65 and older, disabled cardholder and disabled cardholders, no fare for ADA paratransit cardholder, no fare required with Medicare card, $2.24 hour pass, $1. single ride tickets, $8.50 10 ride pass. The 20 ride ticket has been discontinued. In its place is a $32.31 day adult pass, a $16.31 day youth pass, ages five to 18. So, thank you. We have it up on the screen now, I see as well. So, you can see those changes. So, having read that, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there are any comments. I know the clerk sent out one letter that we received via email before the meeting. Is there anyone else that would like to address us?
I see no one in the audience at this time. There's no hands raised. I did invite the person that wrote that letter to the meeting, but I don't see them right now.
Okay, well, we have all received that, and they are basically in concurrence with, with the additional suggestion of consideration of a low-income fare, which we can take into consideration after more input from the staff and so forth. Hearing no other comments, I'd like to close the public hearing and consider the resolution.
Resolution approving proposed transit fares and passes. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Second by Quinn. Any discussion?
I, I just wanted to say, first of all, I'm grateful that we've made some of these changes. I think there are some things that are going to be really good for streamlining and making the process a lot easier for folks that use our public transit. I do hope that someday we can discuss the possibility of a reduced fare that, you know, $32 really is a lot of money, and it can be quite a burden, burdensome cost. I know that that is probably something we would have to discuss a little bit further down the road, but I definitely, you know, I've heard so much feedback on, on this issue in particular, and it can be a, you know, we want people to be able to get to and from work, and that can be challenging when the, the pass is, is that expensive.
Thank you, Megan. Roll call.
Councillor Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item seven is the Electric Vehicle Supply Equipment Agreement. This is an agreement and with Mid-American Energy, and also an accompanying easement for the installation and maintenance of electric vehicle supply equipment at a host site at the city parking ramp at 927, or excuse me, 921 Ponsetti Way, which is basically the parking ramp adjacent to IRL Clinic. The resolution, please.
Resolution approving an electrical vehicle host agreement with Mid-American Energy Company and a Mid-American Energy Company electric vehicle charging easement. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodd's. Let me just first ask, Vicky Robrock, parking and transit director, is anything you'd like to add before I ask if there's any questions from the council?
Yeah, Mayor, this was a great opportunity to us, for us to partner with them. As I mentioned in my memo, there's no cost to the city. This will all be, the cost will be buried by Mid-American, and these will be located on the retail level of the West Ramp, and they will also replace a couple of our current ones that are no longer being supported. So, this is an additional savings to the city in that respect as well.
Terrific. Good work in nailing this down. Any questions or comments from the council?
I just wondered, Vicky, if there was a chance we could make this kind of deal when we get the ramp fixed near the library, if we'd be able to put some in that particular ramp?
I mean, there's, I don't know that we'd be able to do something with Mid-American, but that's something that we could certainly explore as far as adding that additionally to that facility.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Are those widely used, Vicky?
More and more so all the time, as more people are obviously, you know, going to EV cars. We are seeing more and more use. So, that's, that's actually a pretty good thing. Like I said, we are going to have some chargers in the West Ramp that are going to need to be updated on the upper levels of that facility. But yes, they are seeing some, some more use than we have ever in the past.
That's wonderful. And then adding the, the new, the, the two new one on the Ponsetti Way, then how many charging stations do we have total in Corvay?
So, there would be six at the, I'm sorry, four at the Intermodal, and there would be, I believe it's eight at the West Ramp.
And then Hy-Vee's and other places have them also.
Yes, that is true.
The city themselves.
Yes.
Thank you.
You. Roll call, please.
Councillor Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item eight is a 2088, 28E agreement for the city of Corvay's share of the full-time Johnson County Mobility Coordinator position for one year, which is, our share is not to exceed $15,260. The resolution, please.
Resolution approving a 2080 agreement with Johnson County regarding a mobility coordinator position. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Second by Foster. Discussion. Again, Vicky, I'll give you first dibs if there's anything you'd like to mention.
Um, this is just a continuation of the agreement that we've had with the county and the city of Iowa City for the past, I think, four or five years now. So, this is just a continuation for another year.
Okay, well, it's probably needed more this year than others in some respects due to the route changes that the, the systems I've been implementing, so. Any other comments from, questions from the council? Okay, roll call, please.
Councillor member Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item nine, it's the third and final consideration of our community cat ordinance, which is necessary for the city to participate and allow the program to trap, spay, neuter, and release feral cats within the city. Third reading of the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 2021-1008, an ordinance amending chapter 55 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Corvay regarding community cats. This ordinance introduced for third and final consideration by councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Second by Quinn. Any questions or comments?
Will there be some communication to the greater community that they're, just to rest assured that cats are okay in running around in our neighborhoods? We seem to have an over, over concern about kitties that are outside, I noticed, and I just wondered if this would be helpful to do some communication about this ordinance.
Yeah, we'll do that as we typically do, and social media is our quickest way, and then we'll follow that up with a future, one of our Corvay connections.
Thanks.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councillor Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
The ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Item 10 is also the third and final consideration of an ordinance change for the property located at the site of the former Village Inn Restaurant. It's a, it's a rezoning that will allow a new drive-through restaurant to be built at that site. So, the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 2021-1009, an ordinance amending the Corvay zoning ordinance, same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corvay, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 2 Hartland Plaza Part 5, from C2 Arterio Commercial District to CPUD2, Commercial Planned Unit Development 2 District. This ordinance introduced for third and final consideration by councilmember Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodd's. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councillor member Gross.
Present, or here, I guess I said present, but, well, are you guys hearing me? Because I'm seconding everything, but I haven't gotten anything. So, I, I know you're hearing my votes, but.
Yeah, you're just getting beat out by, by Jill. She's pretty aggressive tonight.
I know, you're kind of playing your Mayor Fawcett pretty well there, Marilyn Dow.
Aye.
Okay. Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes, including councillor Gross. Item B is a resolution approving a PUD site plan for this project.
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Lot 2 Hartland Plaza Part 5, Corvay, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Dave, was there anything about this particular item that you wanted to mention to the council, or? Unmute.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, no, there wasn't anything in particular for me to share.
Okay, thank you. I just saw you pop in. I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Councillor Win.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item number 11 is well number 10 recasing 2021 project. This is for the recasing of the water well number 10, which is located near the intersection of 12th Avenue and Liberty Lane. First item is a bid report.
And I think Matt and Scott are coming on here.
Matt Gilmore, our water superintendent, and Scott Larson, a city engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. It took a second to get connected there. So, we're continuing in our string recently of receiving one bid on our lettings. So, we did receive one bid from Northway Well and Pump Company in the amount of $623,008.71. That was above the engineer's estimate of $575,000, roughly eight and a half percent above the estimate. However, given the, the current material supply situation and the amount of time that had passed since the well recasing was estimated, we feel this is a fair bid in the current climate. So, we do recommend awarding the contract to Northway Well and Pump Company.
Thank you, Scott. Item B is considered a resolution.
Resolution accepting bids and awarding the construction contract for the well number 10 recasing project 2021. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any discussion? Anything, Matt, you wanted to add?
No, Mayor, just as a, as a commentary, as I said last time, at the last council meeting, you know, this well is vital to our production capacity, and it is very important that we get this repaired as soon as possible. It's, and as Scott said, I would certainly recommend moving forward with this.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Yes, Matt, could you please explain so that the general public have a better understanding of, if we, once, once this company is awarded the contract, how soon can they begin working on the project? And once they begin working on a project, that well will be out of commission, correct? Would that be affecting our water usage here in the city? Is there anything that residents need to know as far as that? Would it be the whole summer? If it gets really super hot, do we have to do a water conservation?
So, going kind of down the list there, when the project can start, that kind of depends on materials. The steel supply and materials sort of environment right now is highly volatile, both in terms of price and supply and delivery times. So, generally, I would say that we're looking at a lead time for that material of probably at least, at least six to eight weeks. Once that material would be delivered, we, you know, they would have some stuff they could do beforehand, but the project would be largely, largely reliant upon that delivery. In terms of production, we should, first of all, you're correct. Yes, the well will be out of service for the duration of the project, but it should not affect our production capacity. That is, there is always a possibility that we've run into a drought type of situation where, you know, yes, we might have to start talking about water conservation. That's, that's always a possibility. So, I probably forgot a question there, but hopefully they had answered it. There should, there should be no real major concerns barring a major drought or something like that.
Thank you.
You. Roll call, please.
Councillor member Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
The resolution is approved, all ayes.
Oh, and one more thing, Mayor, I'm sorry, real quick. If, if this project, once it's done, how long are we looking as far as the longevity of this? Are we talking 10-year? Will we have to be, be recasing again? Just, just so that, I mean, we spend a large chunk of money here. So, I just want to put that information out there for the general public to know.
Yes, certainly, this, this well, in my estimation, should, should last at least 50 years. The stainless material that's being put in there should, should last a very, very long time, certainly beyond my career.
That's good news.
Okay, item C, under this item, is a resolution approving the contract and bond, bond documents for this work.
Resolution approving the contract and bond documents for the well number 10 recasing project 2021. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Congratulations. Roll call.
Councillor Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Moving on to item 12, bonds. The first item is setting a public hearing for the financing on the acquisition of the Green State Family Field House for June 8, 2021, our next council meeting. The resolution, please.
Resolution to fix the date for a public hearing on not to exceed $11 million general obligation herbal, urban renewal loan agreements. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Kelly, would you like to say a few words, or we see Tony's also on one of.
Yeah, this is for the actual purchase. The financing of the project was done privately, and it was always our plan to eventually take that out with public funding because we can save significantly by having public dollars. The private development agreement calls for. The private development agreement, um, calls for a little over 8% interest, and we can obviously do it for much less than that.
Thank you, Kelly.
And to be clear, this is not new, uh, or not, I shouldn't say new. This is not in addition to the financing we have already committed to the project.
Correct.
This is not a new amount.
Yeah, correct. We already have an agreement that we're paying on, and this will just reduce that amount.
Anything else? Okay, again, for the public, that's at the public hearing day on June 8th. A roll call please.
Councilmember Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Win.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Resolution passes all eyes. Item B is also a resolution fixing a date for a public hearing, um, proposal, um, to, uh, which is an amendment to the wastewater treatment plant loan through the state revolving loan fund that will effectively lower the interest rate on the, on the treatment plant, uh, loan to allow for additional stormwater quality projects to be funded without additional costs to the city. This public hearing will also be on June 8th. Resolution, please.
Resolution to fix the date for a public hearing and a proposal to enter into one or more sewer revenue loan agreements and to borrow money thereunder. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodd's. I heard her first. So, um, Kelly or Tony, would you like to just say?
Sure, at some point, councillor Gross, you'll catch up with the ladies on the council. The, uh, the, this is the program that the state of Iowa, um, does a rebate on the interest, um, to allow you to do stormwater projects. In our particular case, there are three things that we'll be funding. One is the green roof, um, on the arena, um, facility, um, the green roof at the State Bridge Hotel, and then the purchase of significant amount of park ground in Western Corville, in that core area where we'll be purchasing the fin areas and some additional adjacent ground. So, um, this is that, um, very good state program that allows you to do all of those things. And we, in our particular case, we will be getting $2.7 million through these actions to do all of those green improvements throughout the city.
Thank you, Kelly. Any comments or questions from the council?
Is that borrowing money, Kelly?
Yeah, it's a program that the state, so we have borrowed money to pay for the wastewater treatment plant. And what they do is take a percentage of that, those funds that you pay and rebate them so that they actually reduce the amount we pay on the wastewater plant so that we can issue bonds to do these green improvements. So it's a, um, kind of a convoluted way of giving a grant from, um, the state revolving loan fund to make these, um, uh, projects with, do these projects with.
And are they very specific, um, project that we can apply for?
Well, you have to prove, it has to be projects that make a improvement to the waters of your community, and these are proposals that we made to the state and they approved them. Um, another large one that we have received in the past, um, and it's very similar program is all of the green infrastructure in the Iowa River Landing, um, the bio sales, um, the stormwater, um, programs that are in all of, along all of the streets in the Iowa River Landing. So that's a very similar program, um, that we've also received state funds for.
Thank you so much.
Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Gross.
Hi.
Win.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Resolution passes all eyes. Item 13 is the Guest Welcome Center. This is for the renewal of a three-year agreement for the operation of the Guest Welcome Center in the Core Ridge Mall from February 1, 2022 through January 31, 2025. Resolution, please.
Resolution approving a sponsorship agreement with the Iowa Children's Museum regarding the operation of the Welcome Center at Core Ridge Mall. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion?
I would just like to thank Jeff Capps at the Iowa Children's Museum for, um, their partnership with us. That we've been working with them for seven or eight years now on this, and, and I think they're doing a great job running the kiosk. And I know the last year has been challenging for a lot of organizations, and that includes them, but they've continued to operate and, and we appreciate their assistance and partnership.
Thank you, Ellen, and thank you for your efforts to make this happen. Roll call please.
Councilmember Win.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Resolution passes all eyes. Item 14 is an engineering services agreement for Phase 1 environmental site, uh, site assessment update, um, as it relates to an asbestos and hazardous material survey for properties on, that are known as 4th Avenue Place. Uh, several properties there, and this agreement is not to exceed $23,000. Resolution, please.
Resolution approving an engineering services agreement with Terricon Consultants, Inc. for EPA Brownfield's Grant Task 3 Services for the 4th Avenue Place Land Assembly. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Win, seconded by.
I can't.
Seconded by Gross. Any discussion? Questions? Roll call please.
Councilmember Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Win.
Hi.
Resolution passes all eyes. Item 15 is for the sale of three lots to a developer at 711, 713, and 715, 5th Avenue, who will renovate the existing homes to sell for no more than $175,000 with a 30-year, 30-year deed restriction to ensure that homes remain owner occupied. This is setting up a public hearing, and that date will be June 8th, 2021, our next council meeting. Resolution, please.
Resolution intent to dispose of an interest in real property that property generally referred to as 711, 713, and 715, 5th Avenue, Corville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any comments from the staff or questions from the council?
I have a couple of questions, just because I was not at the last meeting where we discussed this. The, the big question I have is that, um, is there, uh, income limit on, or income restrictions on, uh, who can purchase the homes when they're constructed? Okay.
Not, there's just a limit on what the price can be.
Okay.
The only other thing I'd point out, Mayor, is there's also in the contract, um, proposed contract, a long list of re, uh, renovation items that needs to be done to each house. So siding, windows, stairways, um, all, there's a long list that will be included in the contract that the, um, individual also needs to complete, um, as part of this, um, renovation project.
Thank you, Kelly.
I noticed these are such nice yards, and it's such a nice area of Corville. This will be a great improvement for that neighborhood. Somebody will get a really nice home.
Yeah, they are, they're extremely nice homes, and being close to Corville Central also, um, is a great, um, addition also, and we will be working, um, simultaneously with, um, if this individual, um, is awarded the contract, we'll be working simultaneously on the storm sewer issue that needs to be done in the backyards of these areas. Well, so those improvements will be done in addition to while they are, um, doing the renovation work.
That's outstanding. I know I've said this multiple times, but I used to live in that neighborhood. I used to live on 5th Avenue Place, and that was always an issue. And so I'm, I'm glad to hear that that's, that's part of this project. It's, it's, it's really needed in that neighborhood.
Yes, I think, as you echo Kelly, uh, to have these two projects happen, um, you know, side by side, is going to improve that area so much. I drove by there frequently, and it's looking, um, in, in worse and worse condition, especially with all the rain that we had. It's just soggy mess there. Um, and so to, to get this project up and going, um, to see it a little better. But thank you so much for all of the work, um, that, you know, the city, city staff have put in to make this happen.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Win.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Resolutions approved, all eyes. Item 16, I'd consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended.
Mayor, I would ask the council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended, A through S inclusive.
Okay, thank you, councillor Dodd's, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Win. Any discussion?
Mayor, I just wanted to point out to the public, because a lot of times they don't know what all is involved in the consent calendar, but, uh, give a shout out to our fire department, because one of the things that is in the consent calendar is, um, we needed to, uh, update one of our rescue fire trucks, and they have made the decision instead of buying a, a new one to refurbish the one that we have, which, uh, in essence saves a tremendous amount of money and still gives us the services that we need. So, um, well done to our fire department, and thank you for that.
Yep, thanks for mentioning that. Roll call please.
Councilmember Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Win.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Consent calendar is approved, all eyes. Item 17 is city administrators' report. You're muted.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, first of all, I would like to remind people that this, um, coming Monday, um, we will be having the annual Memorial Day Service in the Corville Cemetery, Oak Hill Cemetery, um, at 11:15 Monday morning. And one of the special additions this year will be to, um, have a, um, preview look at the Veterans Memorial and the completion of Phase 1. There's one more phase to go, but, um, there'll be, um, a lot of great things to look at, and the, um, staff and contractor have been, um, busy working this week, trying to get everything looking great just, um, um, so for this week, coming weekend. Uh, second thing is that, um, the, I'd just like to remind folks that the Iowa Police Chiefs Association is, uh, meeting at the Corville Marriott, um, this week. And so, um, it's, they are doing a lot of education sessions there, and just, um, want to congratulate them and thank them for, um, being in our community. And that's all I have at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Uh, mayor's report, just, uh, to extend on your comment about the Memorial Day Service. Yes, it'd be, it should be a fabulous day. It's always a very nice, uh, ceremony that's done in the cemetery, and then the added, uh, added, uh, features of the Veterans Memorial is a nice addition to it. But then looking ahead, since Monday is a holiday, um, most city departments are closed. One of the exceptions is the Rec Center. The, the Rec Center and, and, uh, and Swimming Center is open, I believe it's noon to 5:00. You can check that for sure on the web, on the webpage, but, uh, most other, um, city departments are closed that day. And that means that, um, everyone's garbage and recycling pickup will be a day late next week. So Mondays gets picked up on Tuesday, Tuesdays on Wednesdays, et cetera. So try to remember that and set an example so that your neighbors, uh, remember that too. Let's see, the last council meeting, we were talking about the basket auction that was, uh, coming to a close. And I just wanted to thank the Fourth Fest Committee that pulled that off, uh, subs, and, and of course, thank the, all the businesses that contributed baskets and, and all the persons who purchased those baskets. They raised a significant amount of money, and that all goes towards the Fourth Fest, and it's well used. So thank you for all that contributed in those different ways of, of that. Also, um, it was a, a big week, uh, last week in Corville, the announcement of the name of the new ECHL hockey team, the Iowa Heartlanders. And I think that's a pretty catchy name. People were very excited by that. We had a very large turnout of several hundred people for the announcement on Thursday, uh, evening. And, uh, mo, most of those people, I would say, are not just like the business community that shows up for those type of events. Most of them are true hockey fans that, uh, many of them were their first time in the arena. So that, that was really exciting, and, and it's just another step in the process. They sold a lot of season tickets. I think they sold out of a lot of the shirts and paraphernalia that they had on sale that night. So it's just an indication how things are gonna really be a, a hit with the hockey team. I believe that's all I have to mention tonight. I will turn it over to, um, city attorney report.
Uh, just, uh, Don sends his regrets. He's feeling a little under the weather tonight, so he, uh, didn't come to the meeting tonight. Well, I guess he can miss a few meetings in 60 years, it's probably okay.
We missed him, though.
I, I, he's probably watching, so I'll.
But we missed him.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, thanks for, thanks for pitch hitting, Kevin, double duty tonight. Committee and council members' report. Mitch, I'd like you to go first, since, uh, since I snubbed you so many times, you feel like so.
Oh, wow. Thank you. I, I will start just by the comment you made, and, you know, I'm, I think we've talked about this too, but just how incredibly honored I do feel, uh, to serve on a council with four women. I, I, I think it's a pretty, uh, rarity in this state, but, um, I, I do wear that as a huge badge of honor and, and very honored and proud of all four of your colleagues. And just too, I want to thank Hy and, uh, you know, the two citizens for, uh, the proclamation, because I, I just think, given what has happened, especially in the last year, uh, with the Asian American and Pacific Islander community, uh, and the increased levels of violence, uh, it's really important for our community and our city to step up and, and be leaders in that regard. So thank you, uh, Hy for, for doing that. My library report is that we, the summer library program will be kicking off on June 1st through August 1st. The theme is Reading Colors Your World, and, uh, it's just, you know, I, I, we're starting to get some sense of normalcy back, so that, that'll be really nice that we have, uh, the library, uh, summer read program. And I do feel pretty compelled, uh, because it's, uh, the, uh, either the mayor said it, or it was in the proclamation, being, uh, the one-year anniversary or commemoration of the death of George Floyd, uh, at the hands of police, just really ignited, uh, a movement for change unlike that I've really seen in my lifetime. And, and many, many were called to action to address what our community members of color have always known and experienced on a daily basis. And while the trauma and the pain for his family will endure, um, and for his community will endure, I do find hope in the momentum that, uh, towards, you know, the momentum that we've created towards, uh, anti-racist policies and place reform, uh, here in Corville. So I, I, I do take some comfort in that, and, and while we're heading in the right direction, uh, we just gotta keep reminding ourselves that the work towards justice is never over. It's never completed, it's ongoing. So I just want to say, you know, may George Floyd rest in power, um, and let no one who's ever serves on this council ever allow his death to have been in vain. And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. I'll, I'll, uh, go in reverse order of my screen here, Lori.
Oh. I sure appreciate, uh, what you just said, Mitch, and hi for the proclamation. Um, I also, um, don't want to waste too much time, but want to congratulate Mitch for the tennis team at West High, and, um, just all the achievements that we've seen of high school students, um, this time of year and graduation, and want to congratulate, um, so many in our community. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Lori. Congrats, Mitch, I forgot to mention that, so. Uh, Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just, I don't have a lot tonight. I just wanted to start by, um, you know, reminding people, asking people to, you know, please continue to wear your masks. I know we've seen some of the restrictions lift. I know that there has been some guidance, you know, from the, the CDC on what's safe and what isn't. But I would just remind people that there are still many, many in our community who are medically vulnerable. There are still a lot of people in our community who have only had one dose of the vaccine, who aren't fully vaccinated. There are a lot of children in our community who are not old enough to be vaccinated yet. So I know we're all relieved to be seeing some of these restrictions ease, but I would still just, you know, urge caution and would ask people. but I would still just, you know, urge caution and would ask people to continue to to think about others and the well-being of others as, as, as things start opening up again. And then I just was going to, you know, take a moment to acknowledge the anniversary of George Floyd's murder. I'm thinking of him. I'm sending love to his, his family and to, you know, everyone in the black community who has had to endure these traumas and these, these historic, these historic traumas and these collective traumas over and over and over again. And I know that I sound like a broken record. I've said this many times over the last year, but, you know, we still have a lot to do here in Corahville. I am very proud, however, of the work that we have done. I am grateful that I have colleagues that are willing to engage and that are willing to continue to engage, because this isn't a checklist of something that, you know, you check it off a list and it's done. It's something we're gonna have to always be working on and always, you know, have our eye on and always be striving to do better. And I, I'm grateful that I have colleagues that are willing to engage in that process. I am in it for the long haul. I will never stop. And, you know, I, I just think it's really important, and I'm, I'm proud of where we are, and I look forward to the work ahead. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Appreciate it. Hi, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to remind everybody who live in Corahville and also Johnson County at large that there is a Board of Supervisors special election happening right now. So the last day to vote is June eighth, but right now you can do early voting, you know, right at the administration building on Southview View, and you could just drive there by, by car, by bike, walk. You don't even have to get out of your vehicle. They are right there. The, the voting process is really quick and painless. And they are open from eight to five, all the way until June seventh. So please get out and vote, because it matters. You know, your vote counts. So exercise your civic duties. And then just echoed on what Megan said, I know that the mask mandate had lifted, you know, in, in Corahville and in a lot of, of neighbor cities, in Johnson County, in conformance with the CDC guideline. But I would strongly urge, urge and remind people to do their part to keep communities spread down by getting the vaccine or continue to wear your mask until you are fully vaccinated to not only protect those who cannot be vaccinated, like, you know, children who are twelve years and younger, and then people who have health conditions that prevent them from getting the vaccine. Thank you for doing your part and for thinking of others. When you wear your mask, you are actually protecting other people. And, you know, all of us working together is the only way to combat this virus. So please do your part. And this is the one year anniversary of George Floyd death, and there is a lot going on in our country, and I hope that this will not be, there will not be another death like this, another send less death like this in order for us to look at, you know, what is happening in our country, what is happening in our own community. And we have to do a better job of holding people accountable for their action and also training the people who are serving the public to serve in the most, you know, kind and responsible way. And we have to do it together. We have to hold each other accountable. And it's continue with, right here in our community, right here with the the Citizen Review Board that we have going on, and we have to take that seriously. It can't just be for luck. You know, it can't just be for vision. It needs to come with action. And we need to continue to be vigilant about that. Thank you so much.
Okay. And the soon-to-be bionic woman, Jill?
Yes, I'm going to miss being with all of you at the Memorial Day celebration, but I will be getting a new knee, so I probably will cartwheel for you at some point in the near future. Otherwise, I apologize in advance. I wrote down my comments, because I know when I talk about it, I get a little bit emotional, so I wanted to get it all out. As we honor the one year anniversary of the tragic murder of George Floyd, we need to continue to call out racism. This horrendous event has unfortunately been followed by multiple additional instances of racial injustice. Then there are the senseless hate crimes against Asian Americans. Bullies attack those who they think are vulnerable, and it makes me sick to learn about these attacks and how so many specifically target the elderly. And now we are experiencing a huge increase in crimes of antisemitism. I still feel ill watching when that Asian woman gets knocked down and gets kicked in the head and the members of the store look the other way and close the door. I don't understand what is happening. So I'm asking if you see something, do something. Don't look the other way. Hold your other human beings accountable. We need to call this what it is, and it is certainly unacceptable to allow this criminal behavior to be lessened than what it is. It's a crime of hate. I'm frequently frustrated on the councils when our local hands are tied under state legislation, but I've looked this up in Iowa code under chapter seven, twenty nine A, and it does not prohibit us from political, from acting ordinances to work with this. So I would ask the mayor and my fellow counselors to join me in writing specific ordinances against hate crimes in our community. Thanks.
You. Okay. That concludes our formal meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
All moved.
Okay, moved by Foster.
I can.
Seconded by Gross. All in favor, say aye? Okay, it's.